All right, I'd like to call to order the Village of Marvin Park Recreation and Greenway Board Meeting here on January 5th at 9:07 a.m. I determined that we do have a forum with myself, Bob Nunnencamp, Christina Culp, Dan Wilson, and Shari Albano participating. We also have our council liaison Kimberly on the Zoom as well. So first item on the agenda is, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do have one request to add something, and do I hear a motion on the table that we can adopt the agenda to add under new business item number two, which is an Eagle Scout project led by Derek?
So who?
Any further discussion?
Need a second, too.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the 12 1 minutes, December 1st minutes. Those were in our packet, and I hope everyone's had a chance to look over them. Any questions or edits that anybody would look to request here? If not, do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the December 1st 2020 minutes as they are written? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. And the next item on the agenda is public comment period. And we do not have anyone signed up here, but is there anyone on the Zoom from the public that would like to make comment? I don't think so. It looks like it's just us, so. All right, no public, no comment. First item under public facility managers update, we've got Derek to do a park staff update. Derek?
I just wanted to let everybody know, I'm currently down two people at the park. Part-time staff, Tim Lockwood has taken a temporary leave of absence for back surgery. He hopes to be able to return in a few months if everything heals correctly, but he's uncertain of that. So we did post for that position, and I have an applicant that I'm going to recommend to council to approve at their meeting next Tuesday night. And then the full-time person that we hired to kind of replace me as the park supervisor had to resign for a medical issue. And so I'm looking at options currently, but will probably end up posting for that position in the next couple of months as well. So if anyone wants to volunteer to help out, feel free.
Please.
In the interim, what kind of stuff do you need out with?
Right now, because it's the winter, the biggest things are opening and closing the park, cleaning the bathrooms, changing the trash bags, you know, checking the trail for debris, limbs that are down after storms. It's kind of the lighter end of the maintenance season, but there is, you know, somebody has to be there. The trash cans do fill up quickly on the weekends.
Well, I'll do the trails for you.
At the park?
Yeah. I'll do Tullamore or something.
I work from home, so if we need some, like to schedule some help for opening and closing or something like that, I'd be willing to help do that as well, you know, until we, until we get folks staffed up. So if you want to put a calendar together and put me on to help, I could help do that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm happy to help, too. I can clean bathrooms and take out trash. I don't put here, but.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so do you want to put together a calendar for that as you kind of figure out what's going on and what happens with the other part-time?
Yeah, see what we can, right now, just kind of this next couple of weeks is the biggest need.
Okay.
So we'll see. Thank y'all.
All right, next item under unfinished business items is Derek once again with trail flooding update.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I, I watched the loop over the last month or since we last met, and I'm happy to report I didn't see any flooding issues. It did get close with this last three days of rain, I think we got in a row. Here ended, what, ended Friday or Saturday, and there's still some standing water on the east side of the trail in the woods between the Greenway and Marvin School Road. But there's not any on the other side towards the neighborhood, which had been the problem, and the trail itself was clear. So I was, I was happy to see that after the amount of rain that we got. And I do have a meeting set up with a representative from Union Power who's already told me that if it's determined that they damaged any berm or any of our drainage issues, that they will be glad to fix those.
I'd like to comment about the trails. I sent Derek pictures of the Tullamore Trail, and long after the rain, the trails were flooded. Both the new section and the old section, Derek has the pictures of those, they were impassable. Even if you walked around on the edge of the path, your shoes would get muddy and so much of it. So have you got up with the people yet?
Yeah, so what Bob was talking about was the Tullamore Trail. The trail builder is aware. He's been out a couple of times to watch it, and he's, he's going to bring some more material out and dig a couple drains to help move the water off the trail. It's one of those things that you kind of have to see it in action to really determine, you know, where the, the bad spots are. I mean, unless he's going to go out there with some high-tech equipment and shoot it and, but he's, yeah, he's aware of them, and, you know, he's been our trail builder for a number of different projects, so he's always willing to go the extra mile to help us out and work with us on that, so.
What actual section is that, Dan?
That, there's a little bit in Tullamore Phase 1. There's two or three spots in Tullamore Phase 2.
Is it that back corner?
No.
No, not where the beaver issues?
No.
Well, before then.
Yeah, it's in the meadow portion, so, you know, he elevated the woods section with the railroad ties, and then we moved, you know, from the fence line up into the meadow a little bit, but, I mean, it's still, that is very low, flat land, and so we're, we're kind of at the mercy of Mother Nature and itself. But, you know, he can cut little trenches off to the side, yeah, to get it off the trail into the brush area there, so. I didn't see any wash out of the material, just the standing water.
Correct, but there is one section, I was going to comment, I didn't, when I talked to you, I didn't mention it. And I can't, we could go ahead and take a look, but there's this one section that's just become a washout. I mean, it's this vague, almost erosion going across the path, but it's very small currently. And it's one of those things, if you don't keep an eye on, it'll get bigger.
Well, let's go out and flag it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's very minor right now, and I think it could grow.
Right.
Dan, have you been on the trails lately?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been on it since when it was real wet. The Tullamore does look like, there's a couple of spots that are low, like Bob was saying and you were saying, just from past, a last month or two. But it has been nice to see that the loop has been pretty dry. I do think whether, whether it was the Union County folks or not, there may be some advantages to building the berm up a little in sections to keep that ditch, the water from the, across the road, in the ditch, and getting into, that's really the only source of water other than, nothing really drains in there except for that. So if we can keep that out, if we run into problems again, I would say try and build that berm up a little bit and keep it out.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on trail flooding? Okay, we'll move to item number two, which is update on our discussion of professional access fees. We started talking about this last week, but Austin, what in particular, is this just a continuation of that?
You guys said that you wanted to come back in January to discuss what you were, how, how much you were interested in increasing that rate by to compensate for the loss of revenue from the parking passes. And Derek has.
Okay.
Bob, are you okay if I start?
Yeah.
Okay. Can everybody hear me from over here?
Yeah.
All right, so I've, I've been wrestling with this. How do we effectively charge for a professional pass and enforce it? And so I made out a chart yesterday just to kind of help myself with the visual reference and for, I apologize for the people that aren't in the room, but there's kind of three different professional pass users. Obviously, there's the photographers. Currently, they pay $100 a year, and they use their park at their discretion for profit. Staff does not do any scheduling with them. It's, they come and go as they want, first come, first served on a location, and unlimited profit on their end, obviously. The second professional pass type of user is a general park user, and so examples would be like soccer shots, or the trail running group, or any fitness group that was in the fields. They're typically there one to three hours a week. I will mark them down for what location they're in, just so that if someone else inquires about it, there's not a conflict of space. And for example, there's a dance group that was in the barn on one weekday afternoon, and then there was a running group that was at the park at the same time, so I would just, I directed them to congregate at the picnic shelter so that the barn area just wasn't overrun with two different groups at the same time. So I marked them down for a specific space as deemed by the little ordinance that we passed. They use a, like I said, a space in the park. They pay $100 a year currently, unlimited use of the park, you know, for profit. The last one.
Are they typically the same times every week?
Yeah, they're typically the, the same times every week. Like, there's a dance group that meets in the barn from 1:00 to 5:00 on Wednesday afternoons, and she helps me out. She closes up the barn for me, you know, lets me know if there's anybody in the park, any things I need to, you know, come and check on. But, yeah, they're typically.
But they're more regularly scheduled.
Yeah, regularly scheduled, like soccer shots. Everybody knows they're Saturday mornings, 9:30 to 11:30, they're on the front field. So then the last group is the actual barn users. So these are people like our dog trainers or exercise classes. They're typically three to four hours a week, and they will call us and ask if the barn is available for those, you know, the times they're requesting, and we'll pencil them in, block off the barn for them, so we don't have any conflicts. But they know that they're subject to being moved out if there's a barn rental. So like the dog training group that's in there, she's in there Monday mornings, 8:15 to 9:15, but she understands that if we get a barn rental, that's immediate revenue, that takes priority. And again, they're $100 a year for unlimited use of the park per se, and, you know, and they're profiting. So what Bob and I both found, Bob more so, in the research is that most places, most parks, if not all parks, are not charging for photographers to come in their park. They just let them use the space. There are a couple places, specifically like Indian Trail, that will do a profit sharing model. I think they do like an 80/20. If someone's hosting an exercise class or a dog training class in the park, then they'll ask for, you know, 20% of whatever revenue they're making. And then obviously, with our barn, we are very unique in that situation. There's no other park out there that has a facility like that, that people come and use for those type of purposes. There's, you know, picnic shelters that people rent for birthday parties and grilling out and stuff, but our barn is very unique and highly desired for those reasons. So I don't know what the perfect solution is. I've had discussions with a couple people who use the barn for classes, and just threw out an arbitrary number as an example of a $250, you know, what if we raised the fee at $250 a year? And they both said that that was very reasonable, that they would pay that for continued use of the barn under the same system. The challenge is, for me, is the enforcement of the photographers, so I don't know, you know, if we want to recommend doing away with those, but then I think that's unfair to the people that were charging for barn use, so I'm open for, you know, all thoughts and discussions.
Is he not about to chime in a little bit?
Yep, and now it's Bob's turn.
I contacted eight communities, Min Hill Matthews, Waxaw, Indian Trail, Stollings, Weddington, Davidson, and Hunterford, and none of them charge professional fees. There are no park fees, except Kane Park, and as you know, that's an active park, it's not a passive park. So there's no professional fees, there's no park fees. They charge for picnic shelters, all communities charge for picnic shelters, and I've got their daily rates for that. In terms of donation boxes, we talked about that, there's, there's two communities that use donation boxes, and they do it through a third party, and the reason they do it through a third party is because they found, people got upset. They, people would go to the park, they would donate to the park, thinking that the money in the donation box went toward the, the park, but it didn't. It went into a general fund.
Yeah.
And people got upset. There was no way for the communities to separate out the general fund. So if we were looking at donation boxes, these communities recommended using a third party. There's an organization called Friends of the Park that you can use for this specific reason. So, but anyway, most of the parks are pretty wide open, and all the communities just view their parks as an asset for, for the community members and citizens, so that's that.
Kim, I, just a question in terms of the fees. I'm confused as to who we're charging and, so we're charging photographers to come in a flat fee per year? Is that my understanding?
Correct. We have what's called a professional. Is this the microphone? Yes, it is. We have a professional access fee, so anyone that comes to the park and is looking to profit from their use of the park, then we, we charge them a flat fee, an annual fee for a professional access pass.
Okay.
And it's $100.
So the dog trainer would be charged that fee?
How do we manage?
Correct.
How do we manage that? How do we differentiate between you as a photographer that goes out just to take beautiful pictures and not for commercial use, but individual use, versus me, who's taking pictures for commercial use? How do you, how do we differentiate when we see somebody in the park?
Staff goes up to them and talks to them.
Yeah, and I think it's the same people. You know, it would be the same photographer you would see bringing groups on a regular basis that would kind of trigger that.
If I see, if I see two, if I see two teenagers taking pictures of each other, you know, we get a lot of that. That's, that's like a school project, right? If I see a family of four with their dog dressed up, and then another lady in a separate car, that's a professional, you know, that lady is scheduling a 30-minute session and making 150, 250 bucks on that session.
Wow.
Yeah, I, I would say one thing that I note of that, and I wasn't even sure about the barn users, but in none of those cases does it preclude us from renting the barn.
Correct.
So it's not really like any of those things is costing us rental money on the other I, I do also think that, yes, you know, we want to provide the park as to the community, and I think as much as anything, residents and individuals is one thing, and that's why we've had, also had kind of the parallel discussion around parking passes. But I think when we are talking about other groups or organizations, that does increase costs for our maintenance, garbage pickup, you know, whatever, just taking care of the park, so that when they are being used, I, I think professional fees are legitimate, you know, and, and I think it's, it's worked out pretty well so far, and has been, you know, one of the few revenue sources that we have for the park to continue to maintain itself. Whether or not we need to increase those fees in light of the fact that we know that the barn rentals always take precedence, I, I don't know that we necessarily need to raise them if they're not taking from, from other areas, but, but I do think that there is benefit in keeping them in place at least. Those are just my thoughts.
Well, how much, how much revenue were we losing by getting rid of the parking passes? Because that's what brought this conversation.
About 1,200 bucks, I think. I think it was around $1,200.
Thought it was a little more. My reckon, my thought on the price of the pass is just, is that it is just way too low.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it is, it is a beyond a steal, you know, at $100 when a photographer is charging, I mean.
I'm sorry, I'm missing so much in the meeting because I can't.
I said that, I said that my thought on raising the fee doesn't really have to do with any revenue, you know, making up revenue. It's just that the $100 is such a low fee in today's market that these people are, you know, they're getting out with a steal of a, of a deal.
Well, again, I just need to clarify, so we're, we're charging $150 as a professional fee, where that's just to be in the park? And then there's an additional fee to use the barn on top of that? Is that correct?
No, that's, no, that's incorrect.
Okay.
Okay? So we have a $100 professional access fee. That allows you to be in the park for profit.
Or in the barn.
As long as it's not rented.
Yeah, anywhere in the park, any space that you want to be. Now, if you want to rent the barn to guarantee that you have that, that is, that is a separate fee.
Okay.
But you don't have to be a professional to rent it. You can be just a citizen, rent the barn, you know, for your birthday party or, but you can also be a professional and rent the barn if you want guaranteed that space for that time, no conflicts.
But currently, if you're a professional and you're paying your $100, and the barn is not reserved, you can go in there and use the barn?
Correct. Correct.
Yep.
This is, this is Dan, just, I guess my opinion would be that, I think we should raise the fees on the photographers there. As the users of the park with kids, you know, we go there quite a bit, and I would say we see more people with photographers than we see people using the park that are just, you know, residents of the, of the village.
I would agree with that statement 100%.
Frequent basis.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And so it's a deterrent, I think, either, and I, I don't, I know the enforcement portion is an issue that I'm not really trying to address now or think about, but just generally, I'm in favor of the fees, and I think they should be raised up, because it seems like there's, I don't know, I'd call it an oversubscription, but there's plenty of people willing to come up, and I think it's a testament to whoever designed the barn and the park layout in the beginning, but it seems to be extremely popular. Like, they're literally waiting in line, they're sitting on the playground waiting to get on the, that wall for the cornhole area, and you watch them just cycle through, like one does it, and there's two more in line with their family, you know, families they've got, you know, on a regular basis.
Dan, are you talking about, Dan, are you talking about commercial photographers sitting and waiting?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree, from a staff standpoint, the amount of traffic that the photographers bring in is, is very heavy.
Derek, what about the other professional users, the non-photographers? Is that usage heavy, to use your word?
No, in my opinion, it's not. It's very well managed from, yes, very well managed from a staff standpoint. Like I said, we ask them what portions of the park they're going to use, and if there's more than one group in there at the same time, then we will, you know, separate them or guide them to different areas of the park, but we rarely have, you know, overlapping times, conflicts with those type of groups. They understand the space and the size limits, and council helped us out with that a few years ago, and, you know, if it's a sports group, there's, there's a limit on the size, you know, the amount of kids that they can have at one time.
Derek? Yeah, it sounds like if we, if we remove the fees completely, then you would not know who's coming, when, and where, and all that. It would be actually kind of a mess, potentially.
Well, nobody else has the size, the limited size space that we have, too. I mean, we're, we have one park with four to five acres of usable space, and we can only accommodate.
I think we need to charge fees. My question is.
60 to 70 parking spots?
Here's my question. We raise X amount of dollars of the professional fees, and the park creates that revenue for us, correct? The use of the park.
Right.
So where does the money go? Does money go back to be reinvested in the park, the asset that creates the revenue? Or does it go into a general fund and does not go back to the park? Where does, where does this money go?
Kim, it would just go back to the general fund, right? Any money raised?
Current fees?
Current party.
I, I don't have that.
I, I don't have, that's a Jamie question. I don't know where the, I mean, I think it's, I mean, if it's being, if it's fees for the park, I think it should go back to the park.
Oh, I didn't hear.
Like, we, we want, we want the parks and greenways and trails and all this to continue to grow. And the only way we're going to do that is if we're increasing fees, if we're giving donations, or raising taxes. So, you know, my thought is that it should go back to the park. Now, where does it actually go? That's a Jamie question, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that would default to the general, to the general fund, but it could be allocated in a bunch.
Yeah, it would go back to the general fund, but then it would turn around and be allocated back to either the operating expenses of the park or capital improvement projects.
Can we double check that?
Let's not, let's not guess that. Let's ask Jamie before we proceed on that question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jamie won't be in until 11:00, so I might ask Julie right now.
And, and what I would add is that even if it does go back to the general fund, I, I think the council in general, as they're looking at budgets and stuff, is then looking back at what revenue the park is bringing in, you know? Not necessarily that it be self-sufficient, but I think there's always been kind of trying to get that money back into the park. And, and I think it kind of helps further justify, you know, putting money toward the park when, when it does come time for budgeting.
Yeah, we're, we're always giving more money to the park than the park is bringing in.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So, but when we're making a right, then. Right.
I just have a question to go back. I'm sorry, I know it's asking about fees. So, we, we charge that professional fee, the rental of the barn, if you want to rent it for an event, is there a fee for that?
Yes.
Yes.
How much is that?
It's anywhere from 100 to 350 for a four-hour block, based on what day of the week it is and if you're a resident or non-resident.
And does it matter what type of event, like, when somebody lets in cater food in there?
It does not matter at all. All we provide is the space and then we let people do whatever they, you know, have whatever kind of event they want to, as long as they return it back to the condition that it was when they got there.
Are we charging, are we charging for the picnic shelter?
Yes.
Okay, and how much are we charging?
It is, it's a lesser fee.
75% of the barn roughly.
Say that again?
The, the fees for the picnic shelter Derek was saying is roughly 75% of the barn fees. He's going to go check.
Barn fee, how much?
We, well, y'all raised them a few.
It kind of changes whether it's resident, non-resident.
He's got it. Hey, Sherri, is that the most up-to-date one? Just for an example, the barn on a Sunday, which is our, you know, a peak time, is $200 for a resident and 350 for a non-resident. And then the picnic shelter is 125 for a resident and 250 for a non-resident.
Derek, is all, Derek, is all of this on the website?
Yes, these are, this is the barn picnic shelter rental agreement that you guys approved modifications to after we built the picnic shelter.
And it's on the website?
Yeah, that is, well, it's on the website when the website is working, which is currently now. But it is, it is posted and that was, y'all approved that, I think, in July of last year.
Says revised 3/2020.
And those are the weekend rates.
Oh, yeah.
There's weekday rates as well, correct?
Yeah, it varies based on day of the week and resident versus non-resident. We have an increase for holidays. We have a discount for nonprofit groups. And like I said, the barn costs more than the picnic shelter.
And, and I think.
Derek, is the barn, is the barn pretty busy? In other words, are the fees good for the barn?
Yes. Pre-COVID, good weather, yes, the barn was, was very busy. If you remember the data we've shown, it's just been a steady increase over the last few years.
So, are fees are good for the barn, it sounds like, as well? So, is there any potential to raise those fees a little, not a lot, but a little?
We just did that. I would not recommend that, doing that.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, we just took those.
Then forget that.
Yeah. And, and I would say that they're still.
They're still pretty low.
Yeah, they're still pretty low compared to others.
No, you're not.
What's the relative other structures cost to rent?
Yeah, they're, they're not low. They're very competitive, but they're not low compared to other people's.
Okay. Well, I, I'm, I think that we should add donation boxes and I think that we should increase the professional services fees, not dramatically, but some. I think having those at zero like other, I mean, not having those fees is, is a recipe for lots of people all over each other, no control. So, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree.
If, if we were to look at, you know, an increase in those professional fees, you know, of course, we, we don't just want to soak it and drive people away, but would we be talking about instead of 100, maybe $150? What, what do we think would be fair there and still substantial enough to make any difference?
Derek, you said you were proposing 250?
I'm proposing 250, but obviously that's up to you guys.
I think 250 or a little higher even would be okay.
It is for a full year, keeping in mind and, you know.
Going from 150 to 250?
Well, 100.
From 100 to 250, so raising it 150 bucks?
Yes.
And there is a, you need to explain, what are you, what are you proposing to raise the daily, the daily access form by? Because it's a single, there's a single access pass too. It's only $20 currently, or is it 25?
I thought it was $5.
That's, that's a part of.
Oh, you're talking about professional? Okay.
I propose to raise the daily professional access fee from 20 to 50.
Yeah, and that sounds fair too. And might drive some people to, to do the larger one.
So, how would that math work? Just to make sure I'm comfortable. So, George, 250 one time a year?
And full access for the year?
Yes. And in addition to that, if I'm a professional, I pay what?
Nothing. But if you were a professional that only wanted to go one time that year, it'd be 50.
And that's, that's the same proportion. It's a fifth of the, of the annual cost.
There you go.
Yeah, and it seems that Derek has done the legwork too in, in terms of feeling out some of the current folks that utilize it, that, that don't think 250 would be overwhelming, especially if it's an annual thing. If they do 10 events, that's $25 an event. So, you know, when you're thinking about what some of these for-profits might be bringing in with the groups they bring in, and you think of other municipalities doing a profit-sharing 80/20 thing, this might just be more of a, you know, an easy way to administer rather than getting into percentages. I, I feel pretty comfortable with, with the recommendations that he's making. Anybody else?
I agree.
I think, I think we need to give it go.
All right. Do I hear a motion on the table then to increase the professional fees at the Village of Marvin Park from 100 to 250 a year? And to increase the single-day professional pass from 20 to 50 dollars? Wait here a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
John, I do want to support Christina on the donation boxes that we need to be, I think we need to look at that.
Okay.
And then we need to look at how we want to collect it and internally separate it from general fund so we don't make people mad when they think they're giving it to the park and it ends up going to someplace that's unexplainable. Because that's what I ran into with three of the eight. They ran into issues where they were making their citizens or community upset because they thought they were giving it to the park anymore. So, as we do this, we just need to look at the detail of it.
Yeah, and, and I think we have to be careful in describing it as a donation box. I, I, I think almost exclusively, we have to do it as some sort of online donation, only because the box then becomes a potential target for somebody knocking off the box.
My thing was like a QR code?
Yeah.
Like a scanner?
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people.
Hey, Bob.
Do that instantly. Do you want staff to research those options, Bob?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, please. All right.
Hey, hey, Bob, the, you said that there was a, like, third-party vendor that helped manage.
Correct.
Did, did any of the municipalities that you talked to, did they tell you that if there was like a management fee or some sort of like transaction fee?
I would have to find that out, Kim, though I didn't get into it.
Okay.
I'm sure there is.
Okay.
When you said third-party, did you mean that it was like a third, like a outside organization, like, say like Marsh or something like that, like a nonprofit? Not, not that it was administered by necessarily a vendor of, you know, managing donations, but you're talking about like a third-party nonprofit that takes the money and uses it only for the park that's affiliated with the village? Is that what you're saying or was it the vendor thing?
As I understand it, let's use Indian Trail. They do donations at the park. And, but they use a company called Friends of the Park. And you can look them up on the internet. And there's another one called, I think it's called Partners for Parks. I think that's, and that's in Matthews. And both of them, the donations go to those organizations and then they then somehow get back over to the community. If you'd like, I could give some detail on it because I do, I do like Christina's idea. I do like the idea of giving donations because I think there are a whole lot of people that would give money if they're there and they're getting enjoyment out of the park and I think it's not doing for revenue. If you'd like me to follow up on this, I will.
Yeah, I, I think so. And I guess the other question that I'd have, and maybe this is something you can, Austin, how is it handled if I, as a resident, just wanted to donate to the park? Do we have a structure to be able to intake money that's dedicated to the park? Or does something like that become general fund as well? Because whether it's me as an individual giving that money for the park.
I'm fairly confident that would go directly to the, to the, to the general fund, just because that's how, that's how, that's where the money for the budgets resides.
Because that would seem to me then that this organization that's taking as a third-party the money for the park, they have to have some way to give it to the park without, you know what I mean? If I can't, as a resident, just give it dedicated to the park and it goes to the general fund?
Because people do.
I want to understand how that works if it's coming through a third party.
People do make donations to the village and I don't know what, I don't know how that's currently handled.
Yeah.
I would imagine it goes to the general fund just because that's where, that's where the fund resides. That's where revenue resides, before, before, before the budget cycle. But, yeah, we, we can talk to, we can talk it over with Christina and Jamie about it and we can, we'll figure it out.
Okay. And, and it's not, and it's not to, you know, we don't want things going to the general fund because we know that's where.
You just want to make sure money donated to the park actually goes to the park.
But you want people to have that feeling that the money's going to, yeah.
This is Dan, just, when we had our orientation for board members, it was just a couple of us on. Now, the question I had is, I think we'll probably talk about it later, but we have some grant money for the trail. And one of the questions I had is about, you know, a financing plan for our trail, a master plan and, you know, organizing which grants can apply for what? And the other, the question I had is, other places, like our company has an office in Pennsylvania, we help the parks there, the trails there with aspects of, of their operations. And the, one of the things they have is a nonprofit that is, you know, Friends of the Trail essentially or something like that, that gets, has events and raises money from sponsorships and things like that. And then all that is put back straight into the trails and parks. Do we have something like that or do we need something like that to do what we're talking about?
No, I know.
And that's why I was asking that question.
I, I think we have a capital project fund for trails and greenways. So, that's a separate, that's a separate source where revenue would reside just for that, but I don't know if we have one for the, for the park itself. Rohit, can you speak on that?
Yeah, I don't know if we have one of those either. I'm pretty sure we don't.
So, this isn't the town, this isn't the, the city and this other area. This is a nonprofit that is receiving donations in support of the greenways and parks there and the trails. And so, then they coordinate with the town. They get funding from all these activities they do.
It would be similar to Marsh.
And then they coordinate with the town to implement the projects that the town, you know, they coordinate to make sure they're not going in different directions. And that's run by their boards, but the, but they use the money only for the parks and trails and things in the fact that they're organized together. Like, they hold 5Ks and use that money to put it back into trail.
Yeah. Yeah, I would see that really similar to Marsh, you know, which is a separate third-party organization, has their own sources of funding by and large, and they coordinate with us as a town to do things for the town. This might be more an organization that, you know, the third-party collects funds for the park. I guess the only question then is, do you run into issues in, in regards to that coordination? They want to buy a bench to put it here and that's in the way. Then that's kind of out of the control of us to some degree, you know, as the, you know, people responsible, you know, people responsible for the park. But I, I think we'll just have to do some more legwork on, on those couple of different options. But I, I do like the idea of finding a way that people can actually donate because we do have a, a community that, you know, I, I think is very supportive of, of things like that. And we just need to give them that option and, and whether it be the right way to do it through Friends of the Park or, you know, create some other sort of entity like a Marsh or something like that, you know, we'll figure out the best way to do that.
So, if we were to get, like, raise funds for the trail, can we, like, get donated, solicit donations from businesses and things like that? Can they, can they give money to the village and it go right to the trail? And I know that's what was just asked, but like on.
Yeah.
Trail maintenance or improvements, can somebody give money, go right to that only?
That's not a question for me. I would ask, that was a question for finance, for finance for Christina. I don't, I don't want to get y'all to ask something wrong.
Dan, we'll, we'll bring, we'll put this on the agenda for Tuesday night and we'll talk to Christina and Jamie about it and we'll come back to you guys with an answer.
Perfect, thanks a lot.
Kim, can I interject something?
Sure.
When, Dan, this might go along with what you're talking about in a different way. One of, you know, Derek presented us an exercise platform that we could use along the trail or beside the trail. And as part of my conversations with these communities, I found out that, and we were talking about fundraising and sponsorship and that, and Dan, you know, the corollary to that is, can we get sponsorships for trails and have a bucket for that to take care of trails and et cetera? And one of the communities highly recommended, and I'm trying to find it, I think it was Matthews, who highly recommended us going to, to Atrium and Novartis. They got, apparently they have a sponsorship fund or a support fund for health-related activities, be it exercise equipment, be it trails. And they got, as I remember, 20 or 25,000 dollars to support them. So, what I'd like to recommend is we have someone get in touch with Atrium, Novartis, and, you know, first and foremost, help. get in touch with Atrium, Novant, and, you know, first and foremost, help Derek with his project. And then secondly, at the same time, talk about trails and fitness and so on and so forth, and see what's available. But that was recommended to me, and I thought it was a great idea. So I think somebody needs to get on point on that.
Sorry to spend more time on this, but kind of following along with that, the question I had was, do we have a funding plan for our master plan? And the answer is yes, sort of.
Kind of.
But there's, there's a lot of funding opportunities out there. Like in May, there's a good one at the Catawba Lands Conservation. I got that name wrong.
Conservancy.
They do the Carolina Thread Trail. They recommended that we seek, there's like a North Carolina State Park, or North Carolina State Grant that's for parks and trails. And they said it's, it's a really good source of funding for these types of activities. So I offered in the last call we had on the orientation call to just put a list of grants together that we could go after to fund master plan projects. And the other question I have generally, if we're putting that list together, which I'm happy to take the first shot at, is do we have a list of desired projects that we can match up against the grant list and see which ones might match well with others with, that aren't, for projects that aren't in the master plan?
We, we used to, I, I don't know if it's been updated, but we did have a whole capital improvement that wasn't necessarily the master plan, but we had a capital improvement plan specifically for the parks and the trails.
And that's updated every year.
And, and that, yeah.
Yeah. And I think we talked about collaborating on that, you know, annually, so.
Derek, can you lean closer and talk louder?
Before, before you all can continue on this topic, I do want to point out that we are starting to stray from the agenda. So.
Okay.
Probably dial it back in a little bit.
The short answer is yes, and we can collaborate on that list.
Yeah. And, and just one thing I would say, look at with any grants and things like that. I don't know if our parking passes would put us in or out of that, but I recall some grants, you know, it has to be public access to, you know, the, the park or something. So I don't know if parking fees, you know, either puts you in or out of public access at that.
I think it does, but.
And I would imagine it does, but just be aware of that as you look at some of those requirements for those grants.
Thanks. So the parking fee's gone now?
That is on council's agenda on the 12th. So they will, they will vote then on choosing whether or not to remove the fees.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thanks, Ken.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of pocket park proposals. And I believe this is one of the items that we were discussing regarding the new site that we have available outside Publix. And I think we were hoping to maybe get a chance to, to take a little closer look at it. I, I actually had a chance to be out there the other day, and I did take a bunch of pictures if, if anyone needs to see it. But it is interesting how they, they kind of made that little kind of trail around the outer edge of it, a lot of it right next to the sidewalk. And it's kind of a, a little trail along the side of the sidewalk to nowhere. But it, it's, you know, the site is kind of what it is. The thing that I found interesting that I didn't really realize before is there's kind of one group of trees that are the trees on it, and it's really a thicket of trees. It's not like, it's not like a couple of big hardwoods, you know, that you could kind of.
Those are privets, though. They're not actually trees.
Well, yeah, okay.
Yeah, little guys.
They are thick. You are right.
Yeah, you know, so it, it, it's almost like, you know, it's there and you have to make the decision of you just leave it there as a natural thicket of trees, or you, you kind of start to look to replace it with trees that, you know, might make the, that part of the site more usable. But it is, it is very level. I was there right after it rained, and it seems to be shaped well enough. And, and they have some kind of drainage dug out to the sides that, that it, it's relatively flat and, you know, drains pretty decently, it seems. But those, those are some of the, you know, things that I got out of it. And they do have a whole new row of newly planted, like small trees right along the front border that, that I think will grow in nicely as well. But those are just some of the impressions that I had. And, and I don't know if anyone else had opportunity to stop by and take a look. Christina?
So I, I did the same. And I don't, I didn't even notice what kind of trees those were at the parking area. I noticed those. And then there's some out by Providence as well. There's.
Those were the ones I was referencing, yeah, a big, a big line of.
And they added some grass that is actually green. But I, I sent Austin a drawing. I tried to use black as part of our.
I've got it.
You got it?
Yeah, I can bring it up.
I mean, it's not, it's a very tiny, I mean, the scale is, you know, minuscule. So it's, it's just a real big guess, I think. So while he's trying to pull that up, I'll tell you, my initial idea was to try to make it a certified wildlife area, so that it would have things that we needed for that. Okay, that's sideways. Oh, that's fine. So we would have water and food and cover. And we would not spray pesticides all over the place. I mean, those are the basic things that we would need. Oh, and a place for animals to raise and young, which is kind of all the same thing. And so you can kind of see where you are with the parking. The hashed area would be grass, and those are picnic tables and some little benches that would look out onto the rest of it that would be more, I would call it natural area, because it would be planned, but it would be more plants and stuff. And then those are trails, well, paths, all through it. And so basic, and I think that big curved thing is where that, the bit that you were talking about, John, that's kind of gravel right now. I'm not really sure.
Yeah.
It's two different.
It's the trail number one. We talked last, you told.
You need the idea.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to tie all the trails back into the main sidewalk into that trail, so that basically you could walk yourself in circles infinitely long. I did not, I've got X's where the birdhouses would be, or the bird boxes, butterfly houses, bat boxes, whatever. I've got water listed. Again, it's just like, I just threw it out there just and to see how, what would fit and how big this could be. You could put lots more picnic tables in there, lots more benches, lots more stuff. I noted trees, but I did not note all the other plants that I would add to this, because frankly, one, you wouldn't have to do it all at one time. Two, there are a lot of really cool pine trees and cedar trees that little birds and things love already there. So I would take that into consideration. The only other thing, you see a dotted line sort of at the top. I think that's where it drew, that, that's the, I guess the state's buffer or whoever's buffer, where they've already planted some things. And so my thought would be to integrate that with this, so that it's not obvious that there's the grass buffer that the, the empty plant or whoever planted it, and here's our park, so that it kind of all just kind of mushes together somehow. Maybe that's magical, but, you know, magical thinking, but I think it could be done. Anyway, that was just a first pass to, to give you a, a public area, well, not public, I mean, an area that was, you know, more like grass or mulch, and then an area that was more wildlife that people walked through.
Yeah, I, I, I like that, you know, especially as a first draft, I guess, you know, that the thing that we will want to, you know, make sure we're careful with is the cost of maintaining whatever it is.
Yes.
Now, I noticed, you know, both in the front, along Providence Road and along, it's, it's pretty well manicured right now. And I'm assuming that Publix is just, you know, paying for their regular landscapers to, to maintain that. Now, whether Publix is willing to, you know, perhaps do something like that, maybe we have a discussion with them just because they already have those folks there. Because, you know, the cost would go up infinitely if all of a sudden you have to have another company or something like that come out to, to maintain those areas. So that, that might be something that we, we talk to Publix about, because I, I really think it's kind of a draw for them as well. You know, they, they really kind of, Publix especially likes those big hot plates, you know, where you can go and get the hot food and be ready to eat right there. So, you know, this kind of gives them an, an opportunity to kind of help play along that. But maybe it's something that we talk about Publix in terms of sharing some of the maintenance, like maybe just the, the lawn cutting or something like that, that, other than that, you know, would be much easier for us to handle from a maintenance perspective.
Yeah. So I did think about maintenance, because I'm involved in way too many things that nobody wants to maintain. One of them is my yard. So I, I did think about that and made a list of potential groups that can help with that, with the creation and the maintenance. We've got to build it, but usually you get a lot of, a lot of interest to build things. You just don't get a lot to maintain it. But without asking Marsh, I think Marsh would be willing to, to help on that. I also think that the master gardeners of Union County would be willing to help on this. We have a lot of master gardeners on this side of the county and very little for them to do over here. We have a lot going on in Monroe and on the east side of the county, but not nearly as much stuff going on the west side of the county. And there's, I think we're about 50/50 split of location or homes. There's also the Central Carolina Master Naturalist Group that I'm a part of. There's very little of their work going on in Union County as well. I have not approached them. With COVID, we're not doing as much work as we did in the past. But they, they focus a lot on Mecklenburg County parks. But there are a lot of us who do not live in Mecklenburg County that are part of that organization. And we still need to get our hours in. And so this would be a great place for us to get maintenance hours in. And then there's the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. We do, the master gardeners do a lot of work with the Boy Scouts. And, and for that matter, the Girl Scouts. And so there's a lot of interest right now for native planting, especially the Girl Scouts. They've got a project going on right now with one. So those, those are all places that, that might be, or groups that might be willing to help us with this. The other thing too is, and I mentioned this earlier, I don't think this is something that you build out in a year. This takes time, but, and I wouldn't put like big things like trees and stuff. I wouldn't plant those until fall anyway, next fall. So there's things that we could do slowly to, to build this out. And, you know, over the course of a few years, it would end up looking like this, but not, you know, day one.
Great. I, I appreciate your putting some time into that map, because it, it lays it out nicely, some of the things that we can do and appreciate that. And any other comments from other board members on this?
I think this is an excellent layout and has a lot of excellent fact, you know, all the features that you would want in this type of space, I feel like you captured. So I think it's, I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. One of the things I didn't mention is this, I got, I got lots of plants from this book. This book?
Hold on, hold on one second.
Lots of options for plants in there for that, from both of those sources. So they're all natives.
Can you put that?
And I made a long, long plant list that we've used, that are plants that I've used before and have and some I don't know what they're doing.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, and again, to John's point, to try to keep the maintenance as low as possible, because nobody wants to, you know, to make garden maintenance. Even gardeners don't really care for it.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion?
I have a question. So I mean, I like this plan. Christina, thank you so much for putting that together. I think it looks really good. I would definitely say let's take a look at it next Tuesday at our meeting. But if Council likes it, what, Christina, what would you suggest be the next step? What can we do now to kind of start this? I love talking about stuff. What I can't see is we compile all this great stuff and then we don't implement anything. So if, if Council likes it and they say, yeah, let's spray, go, what's our next step?
Okay, so it's funny that John mentioned the, the giant primate forest that's over there, which is a little, it's like scary looking. It's okay. What, so that would be one of the first things that we try to do is get, not try, get rid of that. And my main, I'm not usually wanting to cut down trees, but if you look, the next time you're out there, look at the biggest trees are surrounded by all these little tiny versions of itself. And that's the problem with primate. It is invasive. And we want, that whole place will be covered with primate before it's over. Probably somebody's been mowing it to keep it down. So get rid of that. And then I would start laying out the, the bones of this. So the grass area versus the trail or path areas. And I get that laid out. And then, you know, once you've got the grass area laid out, you know, you've got to cut all that stuff back, whatever's growing in there. And most of that, nothing big right in that area where I drew that, where I drew it right in. But then, and then the next step would be to decide which of those trees that are on site, and they're all either pine or cedar. I didn't see anything else.
Cedar.
There might be some. But decide which one of those you want to keep, because there's some really nice pine trees in there. And maybe I'm the only person that likes pine trees, but I thought they looked really nice. And the cedar trees too, they, they look good. So that would be the next couple of steps. And that's all stuff that really could take all into the summer.
And, and.
And with that, what do you mean, let me talk to some of those groups that you had mentioned, that they might be able to help us out with? I mean, that's what a great idea that is.
Yeah.
Because if, if they need some, you know, one or two hours to, you know, whatever you guys need to do, they'll, would that be, would that be something you'd be willing to reach out to those groups and talk about?
Oh, absolutely. The biggest issue with what I just said is that junk primate stuff. I, I don't even know how that comes down. I think not, I mean, we just have to find somebody that would actually do that work, because they're going to have to have some equipment. Those, those roots probably are going to China.
Those roots go to China.
Unless Derek says I'm wrong, one of the, one of the things that'll most highly need to be maintained, we mentioned, is just the regular grass cuttings. Would, would it be okay for me to reach out to Publix to just kind of share that initial rough draft and say, hey, would you guys be willing to just continue as part of your contract to, to just do the grass cuttings? Because I think if we get that part of it handled.
Yeah.
Then anything else that we do there with, with the other parts would, would be very helpful. So, you know, I think it would.
I just don't, we.
Yeah, we actually discussed that previously. So if you want to take it.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to the GM at Publix or something like that and see, see what level of interest they might have in doing that. Because, you know, that's a big part of the.
Because technically, if we, if we got rid of the primate and laid out the, what's called picnic area, laid that part out, and that's the bottom kind of core, uh, third, and you put, and then eventually put the trails in, there are a lot of really interesting grasses and pines and cedars, all natives, that are probably full of birds and all kinds of lizards and things like that right now. So you're not hurting anything by going and putting that in. And then we plant in that eventually. It looks pretty good, except for the primate.
Yeah.
Scary forest.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. And the primate actually looks cool if you didn't know it was a nasty invasive, because it looks good, but it, it will be grown in the parking lot.
Derek, if, can we put this on the agenda to talk about on Tuesday at the meeting? And then if we like the idea, which I can't imagine that we wouldn't, but we can kind of look into seeing what it would cost and have somebody come in to take out the primate? Because I guess, Christina, you're saying that you're, we're going to need like a third party to come in and rip it out.
It, it looks like it would be pretty well rooted. Like even if you went in there with chainsaws, I, I don't know how to mess underneath.
But this is probably the best part to do it?
Yes, that's it. Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree with you, John. It's a bobcat town.
Okay.
We got, the master gardeners have got this tool called a puller bear, which is not cute, right? And we pull, we can pull up primate center about, maybe that big with this thing. thing, it kind of uses physics to pull things back. But honestly, a couple of those, Derek, you know, dentry, it's amazing what they've done.
Yeah.
Christina, I have a question for you. I'm sorry with your, but I love it. Do you think of maybe like the area where we were mulch? Because I always think about mulch and what they spray it with and what they treat it with. I incorporated a lot. I use Bermuda grass, so I don't have to water and I use a lot of river rock. What are your thoughts on that?
So depending on where you get your mulch, it should be a lot safer one place than another. So, you know, just have to be careful with that. But Bermuda grass, I would just say from a gardener's perspective, that stuff is horrible because it just spreads and spreads. We have it at the gardens in Monroe, the master gardeners teaching garden, and we spend an inordinate amount of time hacking that stuff back. It just gets into our beds. So that's, that's my, but regular grass, not Bermuda grass, is, I'm not a big fan of grass in general, but I know it's.
We have to water it. We have to use a lot of chemicals and stuff like that, which is why.
Do you like Bermuda grass, Bob?
I do.
Do you like Bermuda grass?
Yeah, so I like mulch better.
I think we're in the weeds.
But, you know, mulch is going to get weeds in it. So, I mean, but so is grass. It's always something. But, and I think people like the look of grass better than they do mulch, but it's something to think about. All of those are good points.
What about the idea of using like a river rock? We can maybe even put a water feature in there. What are your thoughts on that? Like some kind of small water fountain surrounded by river rock.
Yeah, I've got three, yeah, I've got three water areas in there. I would hope to use like solar fountains, which I have one up here that, yeah, it keeps the, it really keeps the muds down. But in the picnic area, something about having rock there doesn't sound very, you know, a kid falls or something like that, I think is uncomfortable.
Yeah. I think, I think we can, yeah, I think, I think we can get into those a little more. We start talking about water features and stuff and then there's water, electricity, all those things. I think we're pretty good here though. Thank you, Christina. That really is a good first draft and appreciate you putting pen to paper and also all your expertise with those other things. Moving on to the next item, first item in new business is discussion of current trail map. And Rohit, I think you're scheduled to speak to that.
Yeah, thank you. So this is the conversation that came up last meeting, a really good idea, which is, and some residents have been asking for this as well. And I did get a recommendation to look at, another municipality's trail map, and it's a really good idea. But I just wanted to run, you know, run this by you guys first, where if I were to create, you know, just like an interactive or, you know, an interactive and, you know, available to be just PDF map. If I could get your guys' input on, you know, what the texture that would be, like, you know, the content. And, you know, before getting, you know, before going in this direction, some kind of consent for that to create this kind of map, I think that, that would be the part of it. If I could also, you know, maybe at the next meeting I come back with a template of what the map would look like and then if I could get your guys' help, you know, fleshing that out.
And, and I think here, just to further, so what we want to do is to just get a better representation of what current, future, all of that is?
I think at this point we'll just stick to current because we do have a current and future map. It's on the wall right there.
Yeah.
But the idea is that, you know, people want to know like a more, more, a map that's more tailored towards what our current trails are and, you know, what are all the details and if there are parking and fees and stuff like that. So that, that kind of like interactive map, and again, that can also just be a PDF. It could be both. But if I should go in that direction and if I bring an outline back to the next meeting, you guys can help me flesh out the time.
Sounds good.
My, my initial thought was that, sitting at my house, thinking I want to go walk on one of these trails that we talked about all the time, I don't even know where to start. So I would love that the actual address or something close to the address of the trail head, if that's what we're calling it, is on this map so that I can use the old thumb and find the location. The fact that it's got parking or not would be good to know. And if there's a fee, yeah, that would be good to know too. And then, you know, your basic, how long is it? Does it, is it a loop trail or not? I guess you can tell that by looking at it. Does it connect to other ones? That kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that's all sorts of stuff that I would want to include on this map.
Yeah.
Kind of more like resident focused map as opposed to the map that we have in the maps you're planning, which is definitely more playing focused, would be a great, you know, asset for, you know, our website.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a user, a walker rail.
Yeah. So would that be, would that be fine with you all?
Sounds good.
Go forward with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me, Rohit.
Okay, great. All right, I will, I will have outlined then and then come back to you guys about next month.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you, Rohit. Next item under new business is the item we added, number two. Derek to speak about a Eagle Scout project?
Yeah, I just wanted to run a proposed Eagle Scout project by you guys. It's son of a former PRG board member, Vish, and he's proposing two benches along the Tolemore Trail and two picnic tables for the picnic shelter at the park. And it's just something I met with him and discussed. The Tolemore Trail? Yes. Sorry. These are needs of ours and so I'm in support of it. I just wanted to run it by you guys and.
Sounds great.
Get your blessing on it.
Tolemore Trail's used a lot more than I thought it was.
Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's rare when I'm out there, but not somebody out there.
Any objections to that as an Eagle Scout project?
No.
Did, did you say specifically the picnic bench at the, the tables at the picnic shelter? So down below? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because the current ones are too big. I want to get the smaller ones for that space.
Okay.
Good deal. Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea to me. All right. We don't need to vote on that or anything. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Austin with a review of the action items.
One second. Okay, so Derek will email board members about volunteering at the park. Derek will research donation methods for Marvin Eford Park. Derek will.
Austin, I can't hear you very well.
Speak up, please.
Derek will email board members about volunteering to help at the park. Derek will research donation methods to, for implementation at the park. Derek will put the pocket park proposal on the council agenda. I will place the discussion of park and Greenway donations on the council meeting agenda. John will reach out to Publix about mowing the grass for the village at the Pocket Park. And Rohit will prepare a draft of a current trails map for the February PRG meeting.
And I'm supposed to call Friends of the Park on behalf of this group.
Just one thing, Christina or Austin, if you could just email me Christina's draft there, just so that if I go talk to Publix, I can kind of give them an idea of what we're looking at.
Regarding that, if you guys need something that's a little better looking, I'm happy to, you know, make it better.
We're, we're early stages, so.
Honestly, I think it's a great, it's a place.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Bob, what did you say you were, who you were going to call about?
I've got to call Friends of the Park and I'm also cleaning Eford Park Trail.
You're calling Friends of the Park about what?
About donations.
Okay, any other takeaways for action items that we didn't hear? All right. Last item on the agenda, number two, is board comments. We'll start online. Christina, anything from you?
No. Happy New Year.
Dan?
I just wanted to ask real quickly, confirm, so we have a contract, we got the grant award finalized, is that right, from the CRTPO?
Yeah, oh, I did realize sometime during this meeting I forgot to put that on the agenda. Yes, we did win the, a $1 million grant from CRTPO to build the Marvin Loop Trail. And again, thanks, thanks to you, Dan, for all the help and really excited to get that moving.
No, thanks. And I just, so now we got, or we're finally confirmed, we got it, the comment I want to make is I really appreciate Rohit and Kim and every staff's driving of this from the master plan through the grant application. It's a big deal and so we really appreciate it. Thanks, again.
That's a great job.
Yeah, great job by everybody. Sherri? Anything from you, Sherri?
Sorry, I was on mute. I apologize. No, I, I think we're moving in a really great direction and, you know, thank everybody for their contributions.
Bob?
Nope.
Just want to, want to thank everyone, you know, and, you know, to have all five folks, you know, on, on the board and be backful, you know, it's, it's very helpful and, you know, appreciate everybody, you know, providing what they do. Looking forward to a good year here in 2021. Hopefully we'll be able to open up the park for more events and things like that as, as hopefully our whole world opens up. I do appreciate that. And Kimberly, anything from you as our council liaison? All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Do I hear a motion on the table to adjourn the Village of Marvin Park Recreation and Greenway Board Meeting here on January 5th at 10:29 a.m.?
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All right. Thank you, everyone.